All right, good evening, everyone. It is 7:00 PM. It is Monday, August 14th. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The following town council members are present. Chambers, Katuska, Martin, Lapelis, Formicella, Rooney. The following town council members are remote. O'Rourke and Maurer. Council member Reed is not currently signed on, but he was at LNA, so we will see. It's logged in the next couple of minutes. All right. Item three. We have a public hearing this evening. Pursuant to Town Code, Section 470-34B, the town council shall conduct the public hearing for the purposes of receiving public input on a commercial tax abatement application for 205 Monroe Turnpike LLC. Hereby open the public hearing. There any member of the public that would like to participate during this public hearing regarding the tax, commercial tax abatement application for 205 Monroe Turnpike LLC? Please come to the microphone in front of Town Council chambers. Name and address for the record.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Fred Lockeyoma, and I'm a partner in 205 Monroe Turnpike LLC, Town Line Plaza. I'm here representing them and Panera Cafe. I think you're all aware that our application for a tax incentive program was voted unanimously by the committee for 20% abatement for seven years. And I'm just here to iterate whatever, all the groundwork that was done before tonight and to answer any questions you might have. I could go over the reasons that were stated before. The cost of real estate taxes obviously are rising dramatically because of the cost of construction, land acquisition, and development in general, which is causing the taxes to get past the economically feasible amount of money that a lot of our tenants can afford to pay. And it's, it's just out of balance. And this tax abatement would help greatly Panera and any future tenants like Ali's that are coming to our property. And if anyone has any questions about how we got to this point, be happy to try the answering. I wasn't there for the initial applications, so hopefully I could help if there is any questions.
Thank you very much, sir. So this is a public hearing, so this is an opportunity for anybody who wants to come in and speak in favor, speak against, or has questions to come forward. You're under no obligation to answer any of our questions, but we appreciate you being open to that. And if there is any member of the town council that does have a question, they can certainly ask it at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Is there any other member of the public that would like to participate during this public hearing for the commercial tax abatement application for 205 Monroe Turnpike LLC? Please come to the mic. All right, seeing none, hearing none in Town Council chambers. Is there any member of the public that is here digitally, either via their phone, computer, tablet, that would like to participate during this public hearing regarding commercial tax abatement application for 205 Monroe Turnpike LLC? Please remember to unmute yourself. I believe it is star six.
Star six on the phone.
On the phone. Once again, is there anyone here online via their phone or computer or tablet that would like to participate during this public hearing? If you're on the phone, star six, unmute. Okay. Hearing none, seeing none. I'm going to close the public hearing. It is 7:05 PM. I will note for the record that council member Reed did enter the town council meeting at 7:03 PM during the public hearing. All right. Item, moving on to the consent calendar. There is just one change that I would make to the meeting minutes. Page four of our meeting minutes. Item C under action items. The interview was Samantha Spino, SPINO, not Samantha Spino. I would just ask that those, that change be incorporated into meeting minutes. And if there's nothing else, I'm going to pass the consent calendar. That would adjust for the amendment to meeting minutes. I ask that communication item A to activate the rating for meeting. Item six, public participation. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate this evening? Name and address for the record. Please come down to the microphone.
Chairman Steve Kirsch, 35, Apple Gate Lane. For the record, I'm a member of the Board of Finance, but my comments tonight are solely my own. Two items regarding roads that I wanted to talk about tonight. The first is you've got a caving contract before you tonight. And in going through your package, I was surprised that with all the data you have, that there's no list of the roads that are going to be done as a result of the contract to spend $2 million over this year. And so I would like to know whether the full list exists. And if not, if one could be created and put online for the citizens to see. My second comment is regarding Pepper Street and the lack of progress. If anybody drives through it on a regular basis, if I do, you will see how slow it goes, how on most days, with most one, two crews doing various things. I would point out that culvert has not been worked on for two weeks. The trail has not been worked on for two weeks. Today, there was one crew doing some pipe work on the, on the property and extended into the road on the west side. And that was the only work being done today over the entire length of the project. They, as you all know well, it's the first selectman that they would have this project done last year, between August and November, a four-month project. We're now a year out, and I don't know when it's going to be done. But again, if they don't start putting people bodies in there doing work, it's just never going to be done. I really thought that the culvert would be done before the buses started running. You know, there's Jersey barriers there which impedes visibility. And I know there's not much you all can do, but I think, you know, whatever you can do needs to be done. They just need to start putting people on the job site. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate this evening in Town Council chambers? Hearing none, seeing none. I'll go online. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate this evening? Please remember, unmute yourself using star six on your phone or just unmute yourself on your tablet or computer. Once again, if you'd like to participate this evening during our public participation section, please remember to unmute yourself. Star six to unmute yourself on your phone or tap the microphone on your screen. Hearing none, seeing none. I'm closing public participation for the evening. We have three appointments this evening. I made resolution 23-091. Council member Martin.
Mr. Keen? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would ask this council to approve the appointment of Dan Keen, Democrat of 122 Swenson Drive to the Park and Recreation Commission for a term ending October 21, 2024. Dan Keen has been a Monroe resident since...
So there's a motion to adopt resolution 23-091, resolve the town, Monroe Town Council. Hereby approves the first selectman's appointment, Dan Keen of 122 Swenson Drive to the Parks and Recreation Commission for a term ending October 21st, 2024. Motion by council member Martin. There's the second by council member Martin.
Thank you. Mr. Keen has been a Monroe resident since 2010. He's donated a significant amount of time to community service, including two terms as president of the Rotary Club of Monroe, PAC Committee Chair of Cub Scout PAC 262, and most notably as the chairman and CEO of the Monroe Playground Foundation, which led the design and construction of the Wolf Den's playground that was donated to the town in May of 2022. Professionally, Dan has served as a longtime corporate executive in Stanford, is excited to continue his services to the community as a member of the Park and Rec Commission. And this appointment fills the vacancy created by the resignation of Angela Lisi.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this resolution? Just council member Rooney.
Mr. Chairman, if I could add, I don't know Dan very well, but I do know as a councilman and being around that he has contributed significantly to the community. I'm a big merit guy, and I love when I see people come in to commit to the town that have actually proven that they work. And Dan has proven to work with the playground and things that he's done. So I'm happy to endorse Dan Keen for his position. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those favor adopting resolution 23-091, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing none, this passes 920. All right. Item B, resolution 23-092. Oh, that's right. Mr. Keen is here. Mr. Keen, can you come down and please be sworn in? Come on down. Cross the thing. Absolutely. Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly and sincerely affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as a member of the Parks and Recreation Commission to the best of your abilities, so help be God, or upon penalty of perjury? I do. Congratulations. Congratulations, Dan.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Item B, resolution 23-092. Ms. Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have this ready here. I would like to motion to appoint Stephen Brower of 213 Josie's Ring Road to the Conservation and Water Resources Commission for a term ending December 5th, 2026.
Second.
All right. So there's a motion to adopt resolution 23-092, resolve the Monroe Town Council hereby approved. First selectman's appointment of Stephen Brower, 213 Josie's Ring Road to the Conservation and Water Resources Commission for a term ending December 5th, 2026. Council member Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Stephen graduated from UConn and Western New England College with a law degree. Stephen is a litigation attorney and owns his own law firm, Brower Law LLC. Stephen has lived in Monroe with his family since 2020. Stephen is looking forward to using his experience leading organizations to help conserve Monroe's resources for the betterment of its residents. This appointment fills a current vacancy.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting resolution 23-092, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Mr. Maurer, just nod your head.
I said aye. It must not have been unmuted. Aye.
Thank you. All those against, please say nay. Hearing none, this passes 920. Item C, resolution 23-093. Council member Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would ask this council to approve the appointment of Jen Aguilar, Democrat of 32 Surrey Lane, to the Youth Commission for a term ending October 12, 2023.
Second.
Thank you, my Jessica. All right. So we have a motion to adopt resolution 23-093, resolve the Monroe Town Council hereby approves the first selectman's appointment, Jen Aguilar of 32 Surrey Lane to the Youth Commission for a term ending October 12, 2023. Council member Martin, discussion.
Jen Aguilar has lived in Monroe with her family for more than 20 years. She's served on the town council for two terms and is currently employed by the Monroe Public Schools as a parent professional at Von Howell Elementary School. She served as the Monroe, I mean as Massic Parent Teacher Club Board as co-president for fourth consecutive term. She's also served in leadership roles on the Parents Council, Von Howell Parents Teachers Club, and the Massic Booster Club. She's previously served and chaired the Youth Commission for three years. And this appointment fills a vacancy created by the resignation of Christine Fensor Martinez.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. If they were adopting resolution 23-3, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing none, this passes 920. Item eight, action items. Item A, council finance, education, health, public safety matters. Matter by Chair.
We've not met since our last meeting.
Item B, Town Council Command, Plan Zoning, Public Works, Park and Recreation Matters. Council member Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have not met, but just in regards to Parks and Recreation Matters, I did contact Missy and Bill. I went to the park the other day to just kind of cursory look over the new fields, and I think everything's looking amazing. Thank you very much for your diligence on that project. I know there's been some challenges, but you guys are doing a great, great job, so I just want to say thank you. It looks awesome. I can't wait to see the grass, but it's starting to grow on the hill without going off the, off the reservation here. It looks great. Thanks. That's all I have.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, as far as Park and Rec, the cement was poured on the basketball, the new basketball courts in addition to the fields. Summer programs are winding down. The fields actually, right now, appear to be on schedule, which is a good thing. The last concert was last Friday, and this is the last week for camps at Wolf Park. We're good. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Town Council Committee on Legislative and Administrative Matters, council member Reed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That rolled off your tongue nicely. Smooth. You can hear me all right, right?
Yes.
I'm in a, I'm in a, yes, I'm in a tough area. All right. So we had seven new items of business tonight. We did meet tonight prior to council. We had, topics were the Regional Hazardous Waste Collection Program, Supervisors Union Collective Bargaining Agreement, the Quick Med Claims LLC. We had the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health, ARPA grant, First Amendment to the Nagy Brothers Construction Agreement, Monroe Police Department Renovations Building Committee, and the Coachella Paving Batuminus Concrete Road Paving Agreement for F24. Those were our topics. All reached a consensus by all three of us unanimously, and many are in front of you tonight at council. So that's our report.
Thank you very much. Item D, Strategic Plan Committee. We have not met since our last town council meeting. However, we will have a meeting scheduled prior to our September 11th Town Council meeting. I will reach out to the committee members to discuss potential dates. Item E, EMS Building Committee, council member Rooney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not much has changed since last time. I did talk to Burlington Construction as well as Bill Phillips. We had had a conversation last week, I guess. So as you would know, these buildings, the building is completed, but there's always little details that need to be finished. Summer months, getting contractors in to do little stuff, but it is not fully operational. It's fully working. Everything's going well. So, you know, we're in that situation where it's a delta of coming out of the construction into the town operations, and that's kind of what we're figuring out at this time. So we're getting told that within the next couple of weeks, a lot of those finished details are going to be finished. But as you know, there's multiple contractors on these projects. Sometimes it takes a little bit of a push to get somebody to show up on a certain day and that kind of thing. So that's where we are, because for all intents and purposes, the building is done. We're just finishing up those, those tiny details. All right? So that's all I got. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Item M, Open Space Preservation Acquisition Committee, council member O'Rourke.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, we have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you. And item G, first selectman's update.
Mr. Kellogg. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just a couple of updates for this evening. My first update is on Pepper Street. Despite the comments earlier in the meeting, there's significant progress that was made on Pepper Street in, in July, as I reported at the last meeting. They had intended to put the binder course down and finish pouring parapet walls. That all was completed, along with some of the, some of the work on the multi-use trails. There are a few minor, relatively minor remaining activities, which is the multi-use trail path. There's some fencing that goes with that. There's final landscaping, plantings. Of course, the big thing is the final course of pavement and curbing, the pavement markings and signage. They are not going to do that until the end because a lot of this off-road work will involve some construction vehicles having to travel on the road. And so it is, it would be appropriate to not do that final course until they have all that off-road work done. And then there's the new traffic signal that has to be done at the Northern Main Street intersection. The contractor has provided us a schedule that continues to indicate that they will be complete this fall. Although we've had some conversational rain tonight, my, the other part of my update was the improvements at Wolf Park. The new athletic fields, the project is progressing extremely well, despite there have been some challenges from some heavy rain events. The large field is 90% complete. The smaller field, about 75% complete. We'll be doing final grading, grass seeding. There's a pathway in between the fields that'll be completed, and we hope to have all that done this fall. There is an item on your agenda to get, to ensure that the contractor has some additional time because of those weather delays. But again, we expect this to be done this fall, and once the field has a chance to grow and fully establish the turf, which will take at least a couple of growing seasons, it'll be ready for use. And the construction of the basketball courts is well underway. As was said earlier, the concrete has been poured. There's a process where the tension has to be applied. That is in progress. It does take almost a full month to fully cure, so nothing can be done while it sits for that month. After that, the hoops will be installed, the coloring, the court lining, and some fencing and landscaping will be done as well in between those, during those upcoming weeks. Again, half the courts will be lined for both basketball and pickleball, and these courts will be open this fall. That's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Council member Maurer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the update. First selectman Kellogg, I did receive an email from a constituent who had something that he wanted to ask. I did, I, I sent him both to you as well as to our town clerk with the question, but just in case, I wanted to bring it up here. He was curious as to if Monroe has any protections against fraudulent property transfers based off of the latest one in Connecticut in Fairfield where there was some fraudulent property transfer of somebody's actual property by somebody with a same name or somebody pretending to be them. I, I did, like I said, I did send him to both you and the town clerk with the question as well as to state that possibly it's something we might have the town attorney just look to see if something like that exists as well, any protections do exist, as well as to what our options might be if there are any, if they don't.
Yeah, thank you. I will look, I have not heard from anyone in this regard. I have not, I don't know if he, maybe he had reached out to the town clerk's office, but I will certainly check on that, and I'll, I'll certainly ask. My, my understanding of that situation is the bulk of those protections would arise from the due diligence done by the parties and their council, you know, title search companies, et cetera. But I think it's a fair question to make sure the town's doing whatever we should be doing. I fully, I'm pretty confident that we are, but it's, it's not a bad idea to just check that, and I'll certainly do that.
Thank you very much, Mr. Selectman.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Council member O'Rourke.
Yes, I'd like to direct a, a statement to, to the first selectman, first selectman Kellogg, under your leadership. It's once again noted that those projects and such that are under direct control of your office and the town are consistently executed on time and on budget, and just appreciate your leadership on, on those points and continuing to guide our town in the right direction.
Thank you, Mr. O'Rourke. Appreciate it.
Hearing nothing else. That's it for action items. We will not have an update this evening. Mr. President, or, did you?
Sorry. No, nothing else.
No, saying two.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you say saying two. There, no, nothing, I mean, we did get, there was some information we were waiting on from the Diocese and from our own engineering firm that was doing, helping us with due diligence that did come in since our last meeting. So hopefully by the next meeting, we'll have a more substantive update for you.
Thank you. All right. Item A, new business acceptance of individual donations which exceed $1,500. I move that Town Council accept the calling of donations, $1,500 from the Rotary Club of Monroe to the Bicentennial Committee for $1,500. And two, $2,500 from Town Fair Tire to the Emergency Medical Services. Is there a second?
Second.
So, that's my first selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I mean, both of these organizations have contributed to the town in the past. We greatly appreciate the support. I know Rotary specifically wanted to raise money to help offset the cost of the fireworks, which I think everyone knows were extremely well received by the community. So we thank them, and, and the Town Fair Tire corporate organization has often supported our EMS and other public safety agencies, and we, we appreciate their generosity.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Council member Maurer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to take a moment, considering what these donations were for, like you mentioned with the Rotary and the fireworks, I just wanted to pass on to those organizations that helped make it possible, but also to our bicentennial committee specifically, on what a fabulous, fabulous job that committee did. And it was made possible because of donations like this, as well as their hard work. So just a kudos all around. I know, I, the things I went to, I had an absolute blast, and any person I have talked to has had tons of positive feedback from what this bicentennial celebration was. So thank you to these organizations for making things like this possible, and thank you to our bicentennial committee, as well as our entire executive branch and legislative branch and everybody involved who, and just our townspeople for making this a celebration of Monroe and everything Monroe has to offer.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of accepting those two donations, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay.
Aye.
Hearing none, this passes 920. Item B, resolution 23-081. I move that Town Council adopt option one, resolution 23-081, resolve that pursuant to Town Code, Chapter 470, Article 8. Town Council hereby approves the commercial tax abatement application for 205 Monroe Turnpike as referred and authorized as an abatement agreement as follows. Year one, 20% of increased assessment. Year two, 20% of increased assessment. Year three, 20% of increased assessment. Year four, 20% of increased assessment. Year five, 20% of increased assessment. Year six, 20% of increased assessment. Year seven, 20% of increased assessment. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Lapelis. Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you're all aware, we did receive a commercial tax abatement application per our Town Code for 205 Monroe Turnpike LLC and for their operation of their, their lease to Panera Bread. of their lease to Panera Bread. The Tax Incentive Program Review Committee conducted three special meetings to review this application, determined that they met the eligibility requirements of the code. They determined the cost of the improvements met the abatement schedule, which which threshold allows for $3 million or more of improvements. And on June 16th, voting unanimously to provide the recommendation that you heard in this resolution of 20% of the increased assessment for the full seven years that are authorized under the code. LNA discussed this matter on July 10th and voted to adopt that same recommendation to this council, have the town attorney's letter of opinion regarding the application, that it is in order. And again, pursuant to the code, the town council has the sole discretion following a public hearing, which you conducted this evening. So this is fully ripe for your consideration.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 23-081, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing none. This passes nine, two, zero. Item C, Resolution 23-094. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 23-094, resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the agreement to share costs, expenses, and any future liabilities of any type and hold harmless an indemnification agreement and any associated documents by and between the Town of Trumbull and the Town of Easton for the regional hazardous waste collection program.
Madam Vice Chair, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you. So everyone's probably aware of the long history of partnering with the towns of Trumbull and Easton for a regional hazardous waste collection program for residents. Trumbull has historically hosted this program. Part of what they do for that is to secure the hazardous waste disposal company that actually collects the materials and then the transportation to a licensed facility for disposal. And that includes an appropriate location for such disposal. The way the program works, the towns share the fixed costs equally. That's for like the setup portion. And then the actual disposal costs are prorated based upon utilization. So anyone goes knows that they they check cars as they go in. And so they know how many carloads came in from each town, and those variable costs are shared according to that, according to those percentages. It's a very popular program. We'd like to be able to continue it. Trumbull recently notified us that they had concerns. Apparently, a lawsuit had been filed by the state of Georgia against many, many municipalities, Trumbull being one of them. Monroe was not a party to that lawsuit. We weren't even notified of it until recently by Trumbull. The collected materials apparently from a prior year were shipped to a facility that was represented to be proper and legal, but apparently there were some deficiencies relating to the property owner there. And it was determined to be a violation of or allegedly alleged to be violation of certain law. Trumbull has incurred some legal expenses to settle that matter. And they have realized that they would like to to continue this, to share those legal exposures of any future exposure equally as well. Given that, certainly if we did not have this regional program to provide something to our residents, we would we would fully have such liability, certainly sharing it with, you know, with the other towns seems appropriate to me. The town attorney worked with his counterparts in Trumbull and Easton to craft the agreement that's before you, and you have his opinion letter as well. I'd ask that we adopt this resolution so we can continue to provide hazardous waste collection to our residents.
Thank you. I will note that during LNA, Councilmember Mallon did ask whether or not this agreement was retroactive to the legal issues presented to the Town of Trumbull involving their litigation with the state of Georgia. And the First Selectman stated that it's not a retroactive agreement, that it is just for the future bulk waste. Any other discussion? Councilmember Martin?
Just a quick question. Did Trumbull ask us, even though we weren't supposedly part of this lawsuit, did they ask us to contribute to?
They did not. They did not. We were unaware of it until this until it was shared to us recently that they had concerns to continue the program. And it wasn't until we asked why that this was this was discussed in more detail.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 23-094, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing none. This passes nine, zero. Item D, Resolution 23-095. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 23-095, resolved that the Town Council hereby accepts and ratifies a tentative agreement dated July 11, 2023, binding between the Town of Monroe and Local 818 of Council Number 4, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees AFL-CIO, and authorizes Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe pursuant to such tentative agreement of successor collective bargaining agreement for the period of July 1, 2023 through July 30, 2026.
June, June 18.
I'm sorry.
No problem. All right. There's motion by Vice Chair LaPellis. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Rooney. Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as you know, the tentative agreement was presented to you at an earlier collective bargaining meeting. So I believe the council has all the information before as to what what this successor agreement would look like. And I'd ask that you adopt this so that we can move forward.
Yes. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 23-095, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing none. This passes nine, two, zero. Item E, Resolution 23-096. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 23-096, resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the Business Associate Agreement with Quick Med Claims LLC in relation to the Service Agreement for Emergency Medical Services Billing and Accounts Receivable Management Services.
Thank you, Matt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Town Leader. Who else? Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Quick Med Claims, as I think everyone knows, provides billing and collection services for our Emergency Medical Services Department. They advise us in review of our existing Business Associates Agreement that it is it requires some updating to be current on federal guidelines. And they would also like one executed by their new CEO. It's been reviewed by the town attorney. I believe he had some I know he had some revisions that are extremely minor, more housekeeping in nature. And you have his letter of opinion. And I'd ask that you adopt this resolution so we can execute this new BAA.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Martin?
Mr. First Selectman, is there any change in cost or anything that we're?
There is not.
There is not. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 23-096, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing none. This passes nine, two, zero. Item F, Resolution 23-099. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 23-097, resolved that Amy Lahani, Director of Health for the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe any associated documents binding between the State of Connecticut Department of Public Health for the ARPA grant.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry Rooney. Mr. First Selectman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So our Director of Health, Ms. Lahani, who is on the in the meeting remotely, had advised me of an opportunity to apply for ARPA funding through the Connecticut Department of Public Health. This funding would support epidemiological investigations and reporting to the State Health Department regarding cases of elevated lead levels in children, Monroe residents. The funding is up to $11,440, which would carry through December 31 of 2026. It would only be awarded as cases were identified. We historically have low number of cases in Monroe, but this any funding would certainly help support this. This is a routine public health function, and we would welcome it. The application requires the signature of the Director of Health. It's very straightforward. Does have a couple of terms and conditions that are part of the application, which is why it's before you. And I'd ask that you adopt the resolution so we can submit this application.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 23-097, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing none. This passes nine, two, zero. Item G, Resolution 23-098. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 23-098, resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the First Amendment to the March 29, 2023 construction agreement and any associated documents and between Nagy Brothers Construction LLC for the Wolf Park Athletic Fields Project.
Madam Vice Chair, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dell. Mr. First Selectman?
Mr. Chairman, I believe there's been a clerical error, and you have the wrong agreement before you in the packet. Actually, this is not, we just I I had had there was some conversation with the town attorney on how to proceed with this matter, and he prepared a new agreement as opposed to a amendment. And that is not what I have in my packet. You should assume that's all right. I'm going to ask that you perhaps hold this. Maybe we could take a brief recess so I can get the appropriate appropriate document before you.
All right. We're going to pass Item G for right now. Mr. First Selectman, would you like to recess?
Oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry. You know what? Actually, wait a second. I'm sorry. I am confusing matters. This is my I thought we were on a different matter. But sorry, there is no there is no.
There's no issue.
No, I thought I had a different project in my mind. So I'm sorry. This is this is perfectly fine as presented. So go ahead with the original motion.
It will not be passed. Any other discussion?
So the First Amendment to the agreement that we have in?
That is that is correct. Yes. I was confusing this with the Cochula matter.
Any other discussion for 098?
Mr. Chair.
So I can I can tell you that we this this the same information I provided in my update where the project is proceeding fairly well, 90% complete on the the main field, 75 on the practice field. There's a few items that are remaining, fencing, grass planting, this pathway, and primarily due to the heavy rains that were experienced, they require some additional time beyond the original term of the agreement, which was August 15. We would like to extend this to October 31, 2023, which would be plenty of time to complete the remaining items and allow for a little buffer for if there is additional weather events.
Thank you. Councilmember Mallon?
It was answered in the Selectment's update. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will consider Item G. All right. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 23-098, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing none. This passes. Item H, Resolution 23-099. Madam Vice Chair.
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 23-099, whereas the Monroe Police Department Renovations Building Committee was formed on July 25, 2011 by resolution of its council for the purposes of oversight of the renovations of the police department at Town Hall. And whereas the Monroe Police Department Renovations Building Committee has completed its mission, and the Town Council extends its gratitude to those who served on the committee, now therefore be resolved that the Monroe Police Department Renovations Building Committee is hereby disbanded.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Val. Mr. Kellogg?
Thank you. So this is really more of a more of a housekeeping matter. But just to bring you up to up to date, this committee was formed by the council back in 2011. It was brought to my attention by then Chief Salvatore several years ago that the committee had never been formally disbanded. And in researching this, I determined that there were some issues that were never fully resolved during construction. Town was holding a retainage on the project, which had never been released because of those ongoing claims. I had consulted with both the former and the current town attorney, who both had opined that the matter couldn't be resolved into the statute of limitations had run. Our current town attorney calculated that to have occurred in 2022. We subsequently, we've utilized with the advice of bond counsel, a portion of that retainage to appropriately address some outstanding items from the original construction that had to be addressed. That still left a balance on that project of just over $50,000. As this project was originally funded by the issuance of bonds, bond counsel advised that any remaining retainage would be properly utilized to offset debt service. I asked the Board of Finance at their July 20 meeting to transfer that amount to debt service, which they did. So that would resolve all the outstanding items for this project. And I would ask that the council adopt this resolution to formally close out the project. And we can put this to bed.
Thank you. I would like to thank whoever those members of that building.
Yes, you know, many of them are.
Many years of service.
Many years of service. And many of them actually that were on that committee aren't have moved on and not even I believe like, yeah, I think JP Stradinsky chaired that. So he's clearly has moved on. So as as others have.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 23-099, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing none. This passes nine, two, zero. Mr. First Selectman, we're fine with 100?
I'm sorry?
We're fine with number 100?
Yes, 23-100. Yes, we are fine.
Madam Vice Chair, Resolution 23-100?
I move that the Town Council adopt Resolution 23-100, resolved that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the Bytum Minus Concrete Road Paving Agreement and any associated documents and charge orders, change orders, binding between the Town of Monroe and Cochula Paving Incorporated for road paving services during FY '24.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dell. Mr. First Selectman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, apologize for the confusion earlier. I had looked down and thought I saw Cochula, and we were we were actually on Nagy. So this is the appropriate agreement for this resolution. We originally were were considering a different way to approach it, but after consultation with the town attorney, a new agreement was appropriate. You know, we utilize Cochula for road paving services. We've used them this fiscal year. We have the town attorney has crafted a an updated agreement for fiscal year '24, which is essentially the same agreement that was executed a year ago for last fiscal year, simply referencing a different state contract, different end date for this fiscal year, and a updated pricing schedule that would be for this fiscal year, again, consistent with the state bid.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of adopting Resolution 23-100, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing none. This passes nine, two, zero. Second Hope of Participation. There are any members that would like to participate regarding the same school property and community center project update. Hearing none. Closing. Second Hope of Participation. I am adjourned this at 7:49 PM.